Called order?
Mr. Graham.
Here, here, here. Okay, Pledge of Allegiance. Uh, Dave or Jennifer, would you mind?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. It's legally binding, which is standing one limitation underground in the visible with everything invested for all.
Steve Taylor. We'll record your name for the minutes, see. Okay, let's, let's. Well, yeah. Approval of minutes.
Uh, I request to watch for their couple of regular meeting with Marsha. The Records Commission meeting on March 20th. And special meeting until March 7th and March 1st.
So moved. Second. Roll call.
Mr. Greading.
Yes.
Mr. Callie.
Yes.
And Mr..
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, public presentations and action, actions, Chief Brockerman.
Yeah. Good evening.
Good evening.
This is, uh, Police Officer Christopher Chesney, our newest officer. On January 8th, 2023, at approximately 11:25 a.m. Pierce Township Police Officer Christopher Chesney was dispatched for an open line 911 call for an armed suspect at 1788 East Ohio Pike. Upon arrival, Officer Chesney heard several gunshots. He quickly determined the gunfire emanated from a tattoo shop at 1792 East Ohio Pike. Officer Chesney ran towards the parking lot, took cover, and engaged the suspect. The suspect just shot another suspect who was laying in the middle of State Route 125. Officer Chesney ordered the suspect to drop his firearm and get on the ground. The suspect initially complied with the orders. Officer Chesney relayed pertinent information over his police radio. He stayed behind cover and kept the suspect at gunpoint as he waited for backup officers to arrive. While waiting for backup, the sus- suspect suddenly became noncompliant. He stood up to spite Officer Chesney's repeated orders to get back on the ground. The suspect apologized for his actions and asked Officer Chesney to tell his family he loved them. The suspect would not remain still and slowly move towards the firearm. Officer Chesley made the decision to move closer to the firearm as he tried to calm the suspect. Approximately three and a half minutes later, which is a lifetime for a backup to arrive, backup officers arrived. The suspect was taken into custody without further incident. Officer Chesney is to be commended for his tactical response and actions during this critical incident. His professionalism, self-discipline, and reliance on his training resulted in a peaceful conclusion to a violent event. Officer Chesney is receiving a meritorious conduct pin for his actions. He will be recognized also at the 2023 Annual Law Enforcement Appreciation Banquet on May 7th, I believe it is, 17th, I'm sorry. So, uh, Officer Chesney will wear this pin on his, uh, uniform. Uh, and we really appreciate your, uh, actions and you were a fine hire for our department.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service and your bravery. I think we can all sleep better knowing you're around. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You betcha. Good job. Uh, okey dokey. Uh, any other departmental celebrations? John, Chiefs, Chief, uh, okay. Alrighty, um, so public comment, open floor discussion. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak to, uh, to the Board of Fresseys? Don't all say yes at once, okay? All right, moving on then. Departmental updates, Colonel Brockerman.
Um, can you hit the next slide? So we had a couple of events at our school, uh, two of our schools where it was, uh, soon as Andrew gets to that. So on the one, on the one, uh, event, it was, uh, Incredible Kid Day at Merwin Elementary, uh, which we took part in, uh, greeting the children to school. And, uh, the next, uh, event, we went to, uh, St. Bernadette. We have a picture of that where we visited the kindergarten class and did a, uh, presentation there, preschool class. So, uh, we really enjoy doing those, uh, community engagement events.
Thank you.
Well, we got both playgrounds that we currently have right now mulched. Um, that was, uh, the mulch being delivered for the playgrounds. Um, it is a special mall to get purchased. Um, that it is specifically for playgrounds. Uh, so we got that all installed before the Easter egg hunt and you know, everything looked really nice over there. Sullivan's got all the munching, all the weeding going over in the parks around here. So that was a a big thing. And then we did complete the culvert replacements on Betty G Drive and before the, uh, uh, paving for this year. We're getting ready to get started on the, uh, on the curb work next week. So throughout all the roads throughout the township. So, um, Norman Dell, Norman Dartell completed a two-day playground inspection class as well. Um, I didn't have it on there, but, um, yeah, it's a great thing to have because it taught him a lot on what to look for when they are inspecting those. Uh, and he's passing all that information on those to his guys, um, to help, you know, with the inspections and that kind of thing. So, so we can keep better records of all that.
So, uh, what we have here is that the site at 3516 Nordug, which is a site that has been vacant for quite some time. And we partnered with the Claremont County Community Development Department to obtain a demolition grant to remedy the site. So this, this structure has been fully demolished as of, um, as of today and totally cleaned up. So happy to see the structure finally on the ground.
Okay, Chief Wright.
Thank you. I just wanted to report that I know we, we've had several discussions about CPR training for the community. So we looked at how we can, can best facilitate that with managing our run volume and the other activities and tasks we have to do. Um, and trying to avoid paying somebody overtime to do that. So we were able to come up with a hybrid option through Ashley who, who we teach under. Um, I think it's going to be great for our staff. It's going to be great for the residents. So as we assemble residents that are interested in the, the training, um, we have one of our lieutenants heading that up. Then they'll be entered into the class. They'll receive a link so they can do the training online at their pace around their schedule. Um, it's, it's all the videos, all the demonstrations, the testing. And then once they complete that, they'll just have to schedule with us to come up to do a skill check off, which takes, you know, an hour or less as opposed to, to four hours or something for, for people to do. So we currently have that advertised on the website on Facebook and we're, um, collecting interested people to do that. The cost is about $30. The next thing I'm happy to, to report that we were notified last week, we received a $10,000 equipment grant from the Ohio State Fire Marshal's Office. The grant was specifically written to replace worn fire hose and, um, firefighting gloves. They're extremely expensive because of some, some NFPA changes. We have to have a fire hose replacement plan now that our guys are working on this year. So this, that'll go a long way towards stretching our, our levy dollars and getting some new equipment. Um, Captain Smith, um, from one of our unit days in charge of fire prevention, and he approached me with a fantastic idea. I've talked to Chief Brockerman. They're trying to pull together a safety day in partnership with Kroger for Kroger to host up in their parking lot. It's an effort to engage with the community, let them see our vehicles, meet our folks. And then our plan is to invite our neighboring law enforcement and fire agencies. So we're shooting for later in May to do that on a Saturday. We're waiting to confirm that date with Kroger. And once we have that date, we'll get it out for everyone so that they're aware. And then the last thing I have is I, um, we talked the last few months about House Bill 509. I know Representative Byrd had reached out and said that it had moved forward. And I got an email about two hours ago that Governor Dwyane did sign the new legislation today that reverses that those impacts allow us to keep our, our training site for our folks. So that's great news and definitely makes me a little more at ease because it was going to cost us a significant sum of money to, to compensate for that. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, Chief. I think in large part, uh, your outreach and your bringing this up at the township association meeting, I think made a diff- big difference in putting this in front of our state rep. And then he in turn, I guess, shared it with others. But, um, had it not been for your outspoken advocacy, I don't know that we would be where we are today. So you, you know, that's a great job, if you're speaking out. Um, Chiefs, are we thinking about any time in the near term? I know we've got a couple of things going on here, but any of those coffees with the Chiefs, any, anything like that, anytime in the near term?
Yeah, uh, Chief Wright and I talked about having that periodically, perhaps quarterly. So, um, we will look to do that in the next, um, maybe 30 days or so.
I think that's great. I think any, any opportunity we have to outreach to the community with the schools, the Kroger Safety Day, the coffees with the Chiefs, you know, I think that really, um, uh, instills confidence in the community and makes them, you know, know that you guys are approachable as the chief, you know, um, protection officers of our township. So I think that's an extremely, uh, uh, valuable opportunity and I thank you for doing that.
Sure.
So we did John, uh, anything else, Chiefs? I'm sorry, John, okay. Um, Parks and Green Space, uh, Mr. Dressy, is that going to be you this evening? Okay.
Yes, Saturday was the, uh, Easter egg hunt. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend this year due to funeral, but, um, it's always a well-attended event and, uh, good event. So, um, just some things from the parks meeting we had last night. Um, yeah, we're all working on planning for the movies in the park, which is May the 20th.
What was that?
The movie in the park, um, for May the 20th, uh, the movie is. For May the twentieth, the movie is Disney Pixar's Up. We'll start the movie at nine. That was the recommendation of the Fun Flex, the company that's doing the projection and the screen and all that.
Starting at nine.
So we do have a new volunteer in the group who has a marketing background. So hopefully we'll have a flyer. Put together in the next week or so. We reviewed some options last night. So start getting the word out there on social media. So we'll share that, you know, with the floor and post on the site. And also Concert in the Park. August twenty-six, three to six. Let's see, Tim was the ASE AP fee.
Yes.
Sent in for that. Okay, great. That was a question last night. And we talked about trying to do an ice cream social at Spencer Shank this summer and. We're thinking about doing similar to what we did at Grow. A couple of years ago, a community event with the trust, kind of a joint meeting with the trustees and the park committee to, you know, talk about, you know. What they view for Spencer Shank is needs. So kind of looking at July timeframe on that. You know, we don't have to pick a date tonight, but I'd like for the trustees to start looking at that. I don't. The regular parks meeting will be on the fifth and that's kind of a bad week because it's the holiday week. And then the next week, the twelfth would be the regular trustee meeting, but I was thinking maybe that following week. If, you know, we'd want to try and plan something at the park, do the ice cream truck like we did. So anyway, if if trustees would consider that and we can maybe firm that up. In the next, next month's meeting. And then grow dedication. I know that's going to kind of depend on when that, when the playground project is complete, but. You know, want to be thinking about that for some time in the summer. You know, I don't know if there's any kind of update on the equipment or anything. I think they're looking at perhaps late June completion. For the growth. I think that was kind of the last date I had heard.
Late this afternoon, after five, I received an email from Sam Morton with Kleinjers and. He had sent a rather terse email to the contractor saying that we had not received the updates we had asked for. Or they revised schedule and continued to express his concerns about their pace of activity on the project. And also a reminder that they do have a liquidated damages per day. And if once the playground's equipment is delivered at that date, then, you know, they're they're going to be potentially. You know, find those liquidated damages.
Okay, all right. Well, thanks for that update. And I guess we'll just kind of look at that as that project nears completion, try to pick a date. For that dedication. Any questions for the trustees or?
I have one. Have you heard anything from Mr. Ellington in regards to signing this contractor, anything?
That has not been signed? Yep. Okay, we can follow up on that.
I didn't know if he needed a deposit down or.
Yeah, no, I I know that went to him and the corrections have been made and all of that, so.
I've heard, I've heard nothing.
Mine's not so much a question as this comment. The Easter egg hunt went off beautifully. I think that the folks that from all of the departments did a great job. Although we did have a little trouble with the guy that was doing traffic. Did you ever find your hat?
We took them off, sir, because of the wind.
I have to say, you know, the department heads up, I mean, in your groups always doing a great job at those events and that. That, you know, in particular is always, you know, well attended and it's the first one I've missed in years.
There were a lot of kids there. You know, I made the the comment that. We do hours and hours of of planning and and work for. For for like three minutes, the kids are like when they're gone. But nonetheless, you know, what if she's not here tonight, but I want to thank Donna Can for the work that she did to pull it together. Michelle Ballside, who babysat the Easter Bunny. I want to thank the Easter Bunny as well. None of those guys were the Easter Bunny. I just want you to know, but he's, he was pressed into service at the last minute. And did a fantastic job, so. Yeah, so it was like one of those things. Like I told my wife, I said, it's a lot like a wedding, you know? You plan, 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 plan. And when there's a, when there's a mistake as the bride or the groom, you know that it happened, but the rest of the crowd's happy. So as long as those kids were happy, that was the best part. We did have one, you know, that stroller that got away. I was, I was standing there with a couple of of Craig's guys and I was like, God, I hope there's not a kid in that. Fortunately, it was empty. So we were good. But it was a great event. The weather kind of held out. We just had some nasty winds, but otherwise. Really nice day. A lot of fun.
It's a good event. One of my favorites annually that we do.
I'm sorry that I couldn't attend that sick animal that day and still do, but hopefully next year. Okay, good job. Thank you again. Okey doke. Let's see. Planning and zoning, Mr. McCarthy?
Just a couple of items. The zoning commission had their last work session last night. So the next steps will be a, they'll have a public hearing in early May and Administrator Williams and I will be working with with the board here to. Basically schedule the, your guys' public hearing as well. Three updates on some nuisance actions. Two of them I'll I'll hand over to Attorney Barbier. But thirty-six oh three Turnberry, which was the subject of a structure fire. Has been torn down. So the foundation remains, but the actual structure is completely gone. So happy to see that and nice. But as far as nine sixty-two legendary and twenty-eight twenty-five pond run, go, I'll turn it over to Attorney Barbier.
Thank you. With respect to nine sixty-two legendary run, a. Hearing was held on our preliminary, our motion for default judgment. Two weeks ago, I believe, Mr. McCarthy and I attended the hearing. Our motion was granted. Default judgment was issued by Judge Brock in Claremont County. There an entry went on, I believe, yesterday with the courts. The property owner, Mr. Miranda, did attend the hearing and as part of our kind of our entry proposal has agreed to certain conditions. Such that the property will no longer be in public nuisance or in violation of the zoning resolution as of April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three. And to that end, I know that windows have been installed, exterior doors, with the exception of the garage door have been installed. I believe the siding is supposed to be finished this week and the brick is complete. So. The court has authorized us to proceed with contempt proceedings if the property is not in compliance as of April twenty-eighth. So we'll. Keep a monitoring on that. And if we need to file a motion for contempt, we'll move in that direction. But as of now. The property owner has made representations that it will be compliant, at least from the exterior of the property and. We're going on that with our default judgment entry.
Understand the meaning of the term contempt. What what is that?
So he'll be in contempt of court, meaning he's in violation of a court order, which allows us to file. Content or pursue with contempt proceedings, which entitles us to all kinds of damages. I mean, he could potentially go to jail. That it won't happen. But what we will be entitled to attorney fees and other damages as a result of them violating court orders and our and our. Need then to enforce a court order through further legal action. So it just opens up another avenue for money damages essentially. And it kind of is another weapon in our arsenal with respect to kind of forcing compliance of the property. Is it a court order? Once that's issued, it's kind of a powerful vehicle moving forward for kind of, you know, weaponizing the court system a bit.
Okay, and if if he doesn't comply until the.
I don't think that's the right word. It's a way to use the court system to affect the our will, I guess.
It's not so much our will. It's what our rules and statutes require. Safety issues.
Safety, exactly. But as of now, the property owner is represented. It will be. Compliant with our zoning resolution as of April twenty eighth.
And that's the cutoff date beyond which we can. This course of action.
Correct. Proceed with contempt.
Thank you very much.
Andrew's learning.
On their controls. You're doing good, Andrew.
We believe in you, Andrew. We do. I don't care what Debbie says. We do.
Twenty-eight twenty-five pond run, that's in litigation. So I don't want to go too far into that because. I don't want to, you know, jeopardize our attorney-client work product here, but that's that's still in litigation. That's in the court system. There is not at this moment. The answer was put on, so we're kind of just proceeding at the will of the judge at this moment. And, you know, we're probably gonna move forward with filing things, but as I said, I don't want to go too far into our our legal process or thought process here. So.
That makes sense. You know, we don't want to jeopardize our position in that respect. So thank you for those updates. Anything further questions for our attorney?
We we also have another nuisance ordinance on the premier side.
Right.
So can you give us kind of an update on where that stands right now?
Yeah, so as of my my understanding is that we are, are we doing the resolution tonight, Mr. McCarthy? We'd be past resolution last meeting. We are setting out notices.
We will be sending out notices. And so basically, once we send out formal notices to everyone that's been. Is deemed a lien holder or mortgage holder on the property. There is then a thirty-day window where this board will then have to make a motion on which specific action is to be taken. Within that window, there's a twenty-day period that all mortgage holders and lien holders have to appeal the notice.
And we're we're under the understanding that someone would probably appeal that post notices just from conversations with, I believe. Green, Green Works' attorney. So that's something that's just going to be presented to the board and through the process. But I know that Mr. McCarthy, we had a discussion this morning about the appropriate parties to whom we're sending the notices. So I think that should be going out. Either today or shortly.
I'm not sure that I would think it wise for Green Tree to actually file an appeal on this case.
Yeah, I don't know exactly how they're going to proceed with that. I know that they had a court proceeding, what, April fourth to change the receiver. So I'm not exactly sure their their strategy.
But we're we're moving forward on that.
We're moving forward.
Perhaps the next board meeting will have. Legislation for us to.
We've we've attempted to time it so that it would line up timing-wise with the next board meeting, which is why we're setting the notices when we are.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. Williams, administration.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, a couple of things. One, happy to report that we received five proposals. For our comprehensive facility analysis of this building, including our public safety portion of that. We did a lot of work in trying to get some interest in that and was happy to see that. Five very qualified firms have have agreed or have put in a proposal. If you recall from an earlier meeting, we have set up a steering committee. That is going to work through not only the facility analysis, but ultimately the next steps if the board decides to move forward with that. Down the road, that facility, that steering committee is chaired by Mr. Kelly. And also on the committee are our four department heads, myself, Ms. Why. And we have three residents in the community that all have expertise that can really bring to the fore on this. So. Really excited to go through this process. It'll be very time-consuming. The first step will be for the committee. They have the proposals. Now to review, to review the individual proposals. We will be meeting on April twentieth. To go over those proposals and narrow it down to the top three for interviews. And then the next step in the process will be interviewing the top three in person. And then making ultimately a recommendation to this board on who we feel as a steering committee is best suited to take us through the facility analysis. The employee luncheon was held last week and we were. Just, I think it was supposed to be done by March, Mr. Kelly. So we got right in under the wire on that in terms of of getting it accomplished. But we had forty-some odd employees that were able to attend. I think everybody had a great time. It was hosted by a legendary run. They did an absolutely fantastic job. And were very, very good to us, the whole process. I definitely want to thank them as being a great community partner. And then the last thing.
We weren't, we weren't sure you were going to be emceeing.
I'm sorry.
You were going to be emceeing.
Oh, yeah, I I may get fired from my MC weekends after this last time.
Hey, you did a great job. You did a good job. I appreciate the effort you put in.
I appreciate the 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 staff humoring me at that time, but I was the entertainment for the for the day. Let's just finish that. Then lastly, Chairman Campbell has had asked me to just do a quick report on Green Road. And we are continuing to engage with the residents and in the vineyards as well as Green Road. And where we've left it at this point is as the weather will is conducive. Mr. Kohler is going to be working on painting the speed limit on a couple of key places on Green Road. So it's very visible and and people are turning on and off of it can see that not only in the signs on the side of the road, but down as well. The other part that came out of the the initial recommendations was potentially what I'm calling an inverted speed table. So if speed tables are not speed table, speed rumble strip. What you normally see in rumble strips is something that is raised. Mr. Kohler had an idea that we would do a very small inverted. Rumble strip in a series of three Chevrons. The residents seemed somewhat interested in our last meeting, but a few that live on Green Road wanted to see how they function in other places. To see how loud they would be. I think we've struggled a bit in coming up with a place that's exactly like what Mr. Kohler has suggested. We're not aware of any, but I would say that it is somewhere close to maybe the the curve on Mac. Mac, is it Mac, the the road that goes over to Union Township? I think in their curve, they have something similar to that. And then also, if you want to see something in extreme. If you look at the interstate and you get off of the lanes onto the the side of the road, you you hear the rumble strips very loudly. But these would be much smaller and would not make nearly as much noise as that, but it certainly would. You could feel it as Mr. Kohler suggested as a vehicle drives over and that may help to dampen speed as well. I don't know, John, if you want to add anything further to that.
But it's on Clough Pike where they in that bad curve where they always have a lot of wrecks. They they milled that area, but it's a long distance. It's not. Yeah, it's a continuous sound, but it does change when you drive across it.
Right.
But this would be, you hear the sound, no sound, sound, no sound. And do them periodically throughout. The road. I don't know if it'll help, but it's it's worth a try.
You sound confident.
It's blacktop. It can be redone.
The speed of the painting like before that or something.
Yeah, my plan is to put the speed limit at the beginning, right when you pull onto Green Road. From Hopper Hill, you would have twenty-five painted really big on the road. Basically, the two and the two and the one lane and the five in the other lane and then MPH right underneath it. And then you get to the other end and it would be facing the other way for the people headed in the other direction.
So it'd be fifty-two going the other way?
I just, I mean, I don't know what else to do for them. Like you said, we can't control their, the people's habits or people or whatever, so.
Yeah, I think that this is a good start, in my opinion. And I want to, I asked Mr. Williams to just update us a little bit in part because. We're coming up on spring, where we're in spring and summertime, where we'll be seeing more walkers and the like kids and whatnot. So this is a good time to move on that or do something about it. I think this is a good preliminary plan. So very good. Thank you very much. Before we leave, we'll move on to all business. I did want to ask Chief Wright, what are the, how many, I forgot to mention this earlier, ask, how many spaces are there for the classes, CPR classes? Per class?
I want to say ten off the top of my head, but I'm not a hundred percent sure on that. I know it would be all out. It's been easier to manage more and then there's a span of control and we're doing the skill check offs. And then there's uh, span of control, and we're doing the skill check offs. But I think there are plenty of rooms, so I will, it's probably not gotten a lot of interest so far.
Okay. Okay, or maybe we can share that on that with our social media and so forth to, you know, uh, get some more interest in that. Terrific. Thank you all. Uh, is, is there any old business to come forth, Board?
I think there's a little bit.
Uh, I would like to comment real quickly if I could on the um, on the uh, facility uh, bids that we're getting. I, I just want to echo the fact that I'm excited about that and uh, we've gotten some interest in it and I, we did all the facility walkthrough with all the suitors, for lack of a better term. And uh, they all seem to be very competent and um, you know, it's something that's really, there's no roadmap for. It's just sort of um, shooting the gap between our needs and our ability to pay for the needs. And I feel like they all had a good understanding of, of kind of what we're looking at, what our struggles are in the township, and also what some of our budgetary constraints might be moving forward with our, you know, the tax revenue that we bring in. So I, I did feel confident that they all kind of had a good grasp of that. So I'm, I'm, I'm excited about the proposals we're gonna get for that. I just wanted to add that.
Terrific.
It does sound like, you know, you, you wind up with, from what I've, from what I've heard from Tim, the, the uh, consultants that actually did bid are, are tough. I mean, they're really good um, companies, so I'm excited to see what kind of product they, they pull together.
Great.
Um, couple of things real quick. Amelia Records.
Excuse me.
Um, there was an issue that's come up uh, a couple, several times. The uh, big box uh, behind the um, behind the former police station in Amelia is full of records. Um, you talked to the AG's office, I talked to the auditor's office, the answer that I received in an email, so that's in writing, right?
Nice.
Um, that we are not responsible for those, those records, kind of in a nutshell. There's more to it, but um, so I think the next step is we just have to figure out exactly how to proceed with removal of those, of those documents.
And I think we, I think the first step, and I was talking to Mr. Williams about this a bit today, is, is refining our records retention policy. I think that's gonna be the first step, so that's something we're gonna look at. And then, once we can get something down for our records and Amelia's records and one, we can kind of proceed as we'd like to from there, so.
Right, so, so that is a plus because we were worried we were gonna have to spend fifty thousand dollars to, to memorialize those documents or store them someplace. And so now, it doesn't sound like again, I don't have tremendous amount of faith in this process because we've been through too many twists and turns. Um, but at this moment, we have in writing that we do not need to keep those.
That's huge.
Right.
That's really big.
So.
He's a driver, so he's feel good about that.
Right, so.
Too bad is that. We couldn't get anything defended about it.
I think what we need to do is have them there when we dispose of the documents so that at least we can say he was there. He saw us do it. So if you've got a problem.
Right.
Take it up with them.
That's great.
Um, so Craig could go uh, match in there and just go.
I don't know that we're ready for that yet. I think we've got some steps between food and, and, and where we are right now, but we're, we're closer to that. Uh, the other thing, House Bill one oh. Yes, John.
When we get that empty, can I have that built?
I don't know who it belongs to at this point.
It's not too charred.
Yeah. You just spray paint over the burn mark. Um, the House Bill one oh one, um, uh, what was it about a year ago, a little over a year ago? Um, State Representative Byrd talked about a bill he was putting together with Gene Schmidt, with Representative Schmidt uh, to discuss uh, the rules of the road for dissolutions of villages and, and municipal governments. Um, they have actually introduced that bill. It, it had uh, proponent testimony. Uh, three, it was, it was last week. I think it was Wednesday of last week. So that bill does exist. They're moving it through. It has a lot of um, when I read it, I see a lot of Pierce Township in it. I don't know why, but you know, for some reason, there's a real flavor of Pierce Township in the Amelia uh, debacle. Um, and so that, that's nice. One thing that, that I kind of urge them to stay away from is the issue of, of how dissolutions work, but to stick with how do you dissolve once you've voted in, in the affirmative. Um, because that, I think, is tremendously important. The other part's important, don't get me wrong. But having that, you know, how do we, what is the roadmap to get from point A to point B? And we did not have that. And so w- we were kind of the biggest guinea pig that the state of Ohio's had in this dissolved process. And I think this is, this bill goes a long way toward getting that done. So, you know, I think, I think Representative Byrd and uh, Representative Schmidt deserve a lot of credit for the work that they've done to pull that, pull that bill together. So I just wanted to share that with everybody, that that is out there and it's in works.
Okay, so the roadmap was, was crucial. Much of it was common sense. Everybody knew essentially what would work best, but the matter of doing it was another story.
Right. It's encouraging. The gist is more now, it's gonna be like um, like um, consider it like a bankruptcy. So there'll be, there'll, there'll be someone put in charge. There'll be a board put in charge. Um, they still have to keep either the, the administrator or the, or the mayor in place just because you have to have somebody to sign, that, that has authority to sign the paperwork. Um, but there'll be a board, there'll be assembled of county and, and uh.
But the board would make most of the, the, the decisions.
And I've really been trying to pu- push this notion that that the townships that this village goes back into um, should not be held financially responsible. So if there's money still in the till, don't, in our case, it was all locked up. We couldn't touch it. We couldn't do anything. But we had to sign a document that said we were going to provide, you know, all the services, road repairs, the, the, the fire EMS and police. But we weren't receiving any revenue for that. Um, and so in this case, the idea is to try to keep everything um localized so that they'll be able to continue to get, you know, their fire and police will still be in, will still be attacked. Um, so that they can respond and they can do those things. And so the townships during that that closed down, that transition period, the townships are held harmless.
So we had the most skin in the game all along and the least amount of impact as far as decisions get made. And I think that should be flipped. And it's, it was fortunate that we were so fiscally responsible, Debbie, that we had, that had the money to bridge the gap on a lot of those services, because what if we didn't?
Mm-hmm.
You know, that would have been a, even worse debacle.
That's right. That's right. So, but anyway, so that's, that's moving forward and um, I'm really excited to hear it. So. And that's all I've got.
Lots of good news from all in all business. Um, the county did not want anything to do with our records, by the way, either. I tried broaching them, but they don't have the interest, they don't have the capacity, so. But it sounds like we have a fix. That's a huge, huge move in the right direction. So many thanks to Mr. Freeman on that one.
Don't forget.
And Attorney Barbe.
Our legal counsel.
Very, of course, the both of you. Good work. That's really gonna pan out for the taxpayers. Okie dokie. Is there any other old business coming forth, Board? Okay. Moving on to new business, uh, Fiscal Officer Swine.
Okay, um, I request a motion for approval of the payment of bills for the month of January twenty twenty-three in the amount of three hundred and six thousand seven twenty-eight forty for February, six hundred and thirty-four thousand six forty-five forty-eight and for the month of March, three hundred and fifty-six thousand eleven dollars and thirty-six cents.
I'll make the motion.
Seconded. Roll call.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
I request a motion for approval of the payment of payroll for the month of January in the amount of five hundred and two thousand two twenty-four ninety for February and four hundred and sixty thousand, three hundred and three thousand in the month of March, six hundred and thirty-two thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars and seventy cents.
So moved. Second. Roll call.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
And Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
Two more.
That's all.
Yes, ma'am. That's all.
I thought I was getting these on.
Yeah, I know, I know, I know.
Um, we got a request from Claymont County Engineers Office for the roads uh, our part to be paid. We can pay it in two separate payments, one April ninth and one August ninth uh, for a hundred and ninety-eight thousand, two hundred and sixteen dollars each.
So moved. Seconded.
You want me just pay the one first?
Just the one.
Okay. Okay.
I think that was, well, that's okay. I guess that saves you some time. Was that gonna be your motion, John? That's all right. It's all, doesn't matter.
Oh, I'm sorry, John. I had told Laura.
So, so while they're debating over here, um, the, the gist of this is, is that the county um, puts in uh, a, a single large bid for blacktop services, which is nice because when they pool all of the, the townships uh, in the county, that makes the buy much bigger, which means the price comes down. So
You don't have the.
This was, this was our payment. This was our portion of our request.
If you talk on with this type of full reassurance, I don't know the exact number, but I would talk on the back there or the service director in the township. They actually, they were not in the county's uh, payment program. And they paid, they were on, they were on our, they paid a considerable amount by more than what we, I didn't say that right, but more than what, what they would have, they would have been in the county. The one the county made, so. Does help to hear that.
Right. John does do all the, uh, I mean, outside of union, do most of the townships and the county participate in this?
It's they're slowly coming back in. Quite a few years ago, there was a little bit of trouble with getting they didn't have the pay structure set up really well. Um, and they were very late getting the payment done. Um, and there was just a lot of frustration on everybody, on everybody's part. So the county suspended it for a while. And people were like, ah, whatever. And well, they kind of regressed on it and they got it. I mean, it's you, you have deadline, you have stuff on it. Uh, it's, it's runs much smoother now and it's, it's a very good program.
Thanks for the historical context. Um, okie dokie. So Debbie?
I have one more.
Wait, we didn't, we didn't.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
And Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
John, sorry, I didn't, no.
Is this an add-on now?
Yeah.
This one's an add-on.
Your traditional add-on?
Yeah.
Yes, it's tradition.
It's the pace side. I request a motion to pay um, Sedwick, which is our group rating enrollment of five thousand, five hundred and twenty-five dollars.
So moved.
And that, we do that every year.
Yeah. Seconded. Roll call.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
And Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
Okie dokie. Anything else, Debbie?
That's all I got.
Are you sure about it?
I, I think so.
Once, twice, so. Okie dokie. Uh, Administrator Williams?
Yes, Administrator Williams requests a motion.
Uh, again, Administrator Williams requests a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-three dash one zero one zero approving the application for a Clermont County Park District grant in the amount of ten thousand dollars to install shade canopies at the Locust Corner Park Playground benches. Um, information in the packet, uh, this is uh, a, a grant that uh, we came to our attention and I sent it on to Mr. Dressy, I'm in the Parks Department and, or the, the uh, Parks Committee. And they looked at uh, what some potential projects would be, particularly those that wouldn't require a local match. So anything up to ten thousand dollars is a hundred percent grant. Uh, they came up with uh, the idea of uh, doing some shade structures, shut, structures over some of our uh, benches um, near the playground at Locust Corner Park. Uh, Doug, I don't know if you want to add anything to that?
No, I, you know, we uh, we're speaking this for, you know, three different types and obviously we're looking to do as much as we could uh, add even a hundred and ten thousand dollars. We could not have wider match. Um, uh, you know, we did, it was straight in the right application, the, the service department installing those and this is not, this is made of cost as a donation. Um, you know, it shows, you know, the, the township could have included. Um, so it's something that has been requested by uh, some areas of the department and so it's, it's something that just happened with this, um, that's something that needed to be done. It could kind of go within that uh, town.
Okay, so just to be cur- we're talking about over the, the benches around the playground?
Yes.
As a dad that sits on those benches when it's really hot. How big are these things? Because there's, you know, the sun comes up and it shoots from an angle all the time on those.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm still probably gonna get, be getting hit with sun, aren't I?
Yeah.
It's a grant though, so yeah. Yeah.
And you pick one that's uh, to the right angle.
Yeah, I'll have to pick out the right one.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you for that input. Okay?
Do we, did we?
Was there anything else, Mr. Williams, on that one?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay.
I haven't got anybody.
Okay, so moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
And Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
And more money hopefully coming into uh, the township. Uh, Administrator Williams requests a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero eleven authorizing Administrator to execute the subdivision in special district settlement participation forms for the TIVA, Allergan, Walgreens, and Walmart settlement participation agreements pursuant to the One Ohio Memorandum Understanding and placing any received funds in the township's One Ohio Opioid Settlement Fund. If you recall, I think it was uh, last August, uh, the board approved uh, another settlement, the first gr- group settlements that came through. Uh, this is the second and I, I think maybe a few more that are out there. Uh, Attorney Barbier could probably speak to it a little bit more. Um, but uh, this would be a new tranche of funds that would come over, come in over a period of time that the township would utilize for uh, drug education and opioid avoidance.
Anything to add, Ms. Barbier?
Pretty much covers it, yeah.
Okay.
I'm gonna make the motion to accept money.
Seconded.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
Colonel Rocksterman?
I request a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero zero nine amending the township's noise control regulations setting the penalty for violation of the regulations as a misdemeanor of the second degree to reflect this change in Ohio state law. So a um, second degree misdemeanor has a penalty of up to ninety days in jail and a maximum fine of seven hundred and fifty dollars.
And Chief, was this um, did this come up because of that or was?
No, I actually, it uh, a change happened a few year, few years ago.
Okay.
And um, in checking the uh, statute, we realized that it had changed.
Okay, and therefore we're required to uh, not required, but in, in order to be compliant, consistent with that, pass this kind of resolution?
Correct.
Okay, to codify it within the township?
Correct.
Thank you.
So moved.
Well, so, so I understand this, just, just to be sure. Um, thi- this is something that, that, that the state recommends?
Just.
How does it, uh?
The, the statute changed. So it used to be a minor misdemeanor, which is statutory penalty. The Ohio legislator, legislature just changed the statutory penalty for noise ordinance violations. The state doesn't recommend that we change a resolution, but just to keep our resolution present with current law.
Oh, I see.
We're just changing.
The law is what it is, whether we change a resolution.
But we're just updating.
But we're just making our stuff consistent with what the state requires. Okay. Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
And Mr. Campbell.
Yes, Chief Rocksterman.
I request a motion to purchase three new Smith and Wesson M and P nine millimeter firearms equipped with streamlights and red dot optics from WV Law Enforcement Distributors Incorporated in the amount of three thousand, three hundred and fifty-four dollars and ninety-six cents. The firearms are to equip the three new officers joining the, the department this year.
I'll make the motion.
Seconded.
Roll call.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
And Mr. Campbell.
Yes. Uh, Chief Rocksterman?
I request a motion to purchase equipment, including two tasers, holsters, and battery packs from Axon Enterprise Incorporated for three thousand, eight hundred and eighty-one dollars and forty cents. The tasers will be supplied to the two new officers. We have a uh, a spare taser that will be given to the third officer.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
Chief?
Finally, I request a motion to pay Anderson Collision Center for the repair of vehicle number two. A twenty thirteen Ford Fusion in the amount of six thousand, six hundred and eighty-seven dollars and seventy-three cents. The cost less deductible will be reimbursed through the township's insurance.
So moved. Seconded.
Roll call.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, Chief Wright?
Thanks. This is Mr. Freeman's favorite motion that I do.
I know. I want to go with the equipment, but you never let me.
I request a motion to approve.
I request a motion to approve the donation of expired and surplus miscellaneous turnout gear. Having no value to the township to Dr. Walton Webson. On behalf of the Antigua and Barbuda Consulate General, noting Mr. Walter Cook will be picking up the gear on their behalf.
One of these days. One of these days. So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Mr. Kimballis.
Yes, Chief.
Thank you. I request a motion to approve the purchase of blue card incident command training from Across the Street Productions. In the amount of three thousand, three hundred and fifty-one dollars.
Can you, hold on, can you walk through what that is exactly?
Yeah, so in the, the Clermont County Mutual Aid. Contracts approved or written, um, and approved by the fire chiefs and then approved by each. Uh municipality. One of the conditions in there is standardized method for incident command on scenes, whether it's a structural fire. An auto accident, a tornado. Um, and. We went through, so all the officers went through several years ago and it periodically has to be updated to renew. You do online training, go through scenarios, and there's actually a SIM cell where you have headsets on and run through scenarios and get checked off. So it's just conducting that training and updating our staff on it.
It is kind of cool. You use that virtual reality and all that. Modern gear, that's actually quite cool, but I'll second that motion.
Uh, very good. Uh, roll call.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
And Mr. Kimballis.
Yes.
Thank you. I just wanted to note, we did get a five thousand dollar donation at the beginning of this year, and we're gonna use that towards this, this training for our folks.
Donation from.
Mister, Mister Robert Thole, the same gentleman who's donated money towards the, that we use for the UTV project, the sonar equipment. He sent us an additional donation. So he's donated a significant amount of money over the last two years.
Is the fellow from out of town that used to live here?
Yes, he owns property on Palestine.
Oh, certainly worth recognizing.
Yes.
Thank you for that. Absolutely. Um, Ms. Color.
I requested motion to pay Irvine Wood Recovery for the playground turf. For the park at Locust Corner Park and Shank Park in the amount of three thousand, three hundred and forty-nine dollars. Note, the amount of the playground turf needed this year was more due to the depth required for the playgrounds.
So moved. Seconded.
Uh, roll call.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Kimballis.
Yes. Alrighty, and lastly, but not least, Mr. McCarthy.
I request a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-three oh oh eight. Stating the position of the Pierce Township Board of Trustees regarding the installation of utility scale solar facilities in the township. So just, just brief background, last month you passed a um. Passed a policy stating the township's official position. This is a reiteration in, in the format that. Uh, the county now prefers. So they sent us cor- correspondence on the twenty-ninth. There, there may have been some changes on their end where they, they want a formal resolution, so. We uh basically converted the policy to a formal resolution and that's what you have before you. And it's the, the same subs- substantive document.
At the moment, we're not receiving any requests for large scale, medium scale, or small scale. No, sir. So we're, we're in good shape, whatever form the county wants, we can provide. So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Mr. Kimballis.
Yes. Uh, I believe that's gonna be the end of the new business. We had uh withdrawn a few items, so is there, am I missing anything? That it? Okay. Okay. Uh, the board uh would like to go into executive session, so I'm gonna read a fol- the following statement. I request a motion to adjourn into executive session. As permitted by Ohio Revise Code, section one two one dot two two. Parentheses G, parentheses closed, two. Parentheses closed, to discuss the potential purchase or sale of township property.
I'll make the motion.
Seconded.
Roll call.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
And Mr. Kimballis.
Yes, and I do not believe when we return that we will be engaging in any action, but you all are welcome to stay. Have a good evening.
What, you're leaving?
We're back from executive session.
Right. Do we need a motion to come back in?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
And.
Yes. Already. Would you like to make a motion?
So I guess I'll make the motion that we direct staff to engage a an appraiser for the purposes of securing an appraisal on the Morse House property. for the purposes of securing an appraisal on the Morris House property. And I think that's that's the motion.
Yeah, so I will second directing staff to get an appraisal on what we refer to as the Morris House property. Right? We need an address or anything like that, or we got.
I mean, if everyone understands what the Morris House property is, it should be fine.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes, there any other business coming for the board? Is there a motion for a German?
So move.
Seconded.
Roll call.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.